Hello.
Come on.
Not now.
Okay.
If Shailin comes back with a sign and she won't pass it around. I did, hey, I didn't get much kids, but I did get goodie for your request, so you better have some.
You'll say yes with food. I promise you. You all the guests.
Which flavor do you like? See, we got apple strudel, blueberry.
Raspberry.
And raspberry. What do you like?
Nothing.
Nothing?
We talked.
Are you sure? Why are you just being shy? I don't know, they smell really good. That is barf. We know barf's what is. Not really.
I'm just kidding.
So you guys anticipate, did anyone else stay?
We have T U at the PTA meeting, I'm really sad about that.
Well, this is your meeting, ours starts at five thirty.
We'll see you there.
We'll see you there.
Did you guys anticipate anyone else coming? Are we like, ah, I don't know.
I see David make comments. I hope David make the other.
I understand what you're doing. Just wondering if we should wait for somebody who said they were coming or if we should.
I have not heard confirmation from anybody, I did make a post.
Are we already live? All right, since we're already live, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna start by saying this is our first, but our first project hearing for Capital Project. And I'd like to publicly thank the PTA for hosting and partnering with us for this particular hearing. With that said, I think we're gonna start with the video.
Hi, I'm Joe Hart. In former community and answers some questions about a very important referendum coming up on December tenth, twenty twenty four. Our school really needs to protect the assets that the community has invested in over the years. We have some very important issues that we have to fix. They were identified in twenty twenty one and confirmed in twenty twenty three by our building condition survey. We'd like to take you through some of the issues and help you understand why this is so critical. Our schools are the heart of our community. Where children learn, grow, and prepare for the future. Much like our homes, school buildings need to be maintained and updated. Roofs need to be repaired and aging systems need to be replaced in order for us to provide a safe and effective learning environment. Unfortunately, our school building is showing extreme degradation in certain areas, which must be addressed soon and cannot be pushed off to the future. Over the years, our building has experienced significant damage to the exterior walls and the roof due to water infiltration. This stems from incorrect installation when the building was originally constructed. Close to twenty years ago, this has led to sidewalks also needing to be repaired due to uneven settling from water drainage issues, posing a safety hazard for students, staff, and community members. The good news, our project is scheduled to have zero impact on the community members. The cost of the project subject to voter approval is twenty eight point eight million dollars. However, eighty five point seven percent of the cost would be eligible for state building aid reimbursement. Through careful planning and the use of state building aid, along with the use of district capital reserves and Excel aid, we are able to fund this important work without increasing your taxes. We take pride in our schools and the success of our students. These upgrades are essential to ensuring the quality of education our community expects and deserves. We're asking for the capital project now because safety cannot wait and costs will go up if we delay. Capital funding is complex. It's completely separate from an annual budget and the funds cannot be intermingled. We had the rare opportunity to do a pilot project with federal funding. This provided us a better understanding of what we would find under the EFS, a better estimate of what the cost for the entire building would be, and a rare opportunity to see what the finished product will look like. We have put in significant time, planning, estimating, and doing our due diligence to make sure that we can protect the taxpayers' investment in this property without costing the taxpayers any significant tax increase. We know how important your community is to you. For more information about the project, visit our website. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, December tenth, from twelve PM to nine PM in the auditorium foyer.
I hate your. How's pretty good though?
That was good.
Roll me back to our COVID mystery.
Oh, man. Give me PTSD.
Okay, so next we have BCA and Fiscal Advisors, yeah, for our presentation.
So, good evening, my name is Scott Dool, I'm with BCA Architects and Engineers. Nice to meet you all.
Andrew Schreik with Fiscal Advisors and Marketing.
So we've got a short presentation here to just go through with you. As done in the video, which was very well done, nice job. The issues that are being proposed to be addressed were first identified in twenty twenty one and then also the twenty twenty three building condition survey really brought it home. That we had also at that, over those last few years, we've had two studies done by the Garland Company and Paul Carr Associates to confirm what those issues were. So that's, you know, the genesis of the project really. And then also, the district has favorable financial timing, or, you know, timing of this project right now with their debt falling off. And we're looking at being able to maintain the tax levy at zero percent increase. So we'll go to the next slide. We identified in the building condition survey that, and through those studies, that the exterior wall system is, was really not installed correctly at the, at the time of installation. And it's led to a lot of water infiltration problems, as you can see by the staining and the delamination of the surfaces. Also, the roofing as well is causing, is contributing to those issues the way that that has been installed. The roof is out of warranty, unfortunately. And then all that water has to come down and go someplace and it goes down into your building and that's led to differential settlement around the building and it's made the sidewalks heave in certain places and degrade in certain places. So we're trying to look at this project as it's really an envelope project, looking at protecting and repairing the exterior of the building and the site around the building. This is just a slide of your building. The cost estimates for the project and the major issues are laid out here. We're looking at approximately three point six million to do the demolition work of the, of the wall system. We're looking at new insulated wall panels, the installation of that, and those would be about two point one six. And then the installation of that new system is another two, almost two point six. We've also allowed about two hundred and sixty thousand in there to deal with wood blocking around the windows because once we peel that existing wall system away, we may find that there's some deteriorated wood blocking and things like that and we want to have money in there to deal with that. The largest piece on this is replacing the roof over the entire building, but that's where the whole envelope protection starts, is at the roof. And that's about seven point six million, just under. We do have an allowance in there too to deal with the solar panels that you currently have. And then we have two hundred thousand in there to repair the sidewalks. So when you look at all of that, it comes up to sixteen nine oh two, just for construction. Now, base construction cost. And then the total estimate, how we got to twenty eight point eight was you've got that sixteen point two number, then we've added onto that contractor overhead and profit and cost escalation to next spring of twenty twenty six to build that. Brings us to a construction cost subtotal of twelve three eighty one, or twenty one, three eighty one, I'm sorry, not twelve. On top of that number, we always put in a construction contingency and a construction contingency is to deal with unforeseen conditions that we may find when the building is, is opened up and construction is underway. And then there's also project incidental costs and those deal with all the things like architectural engineering fees, construction management fees, fiscal advisor fees, testing, all of the printing of the project, all of those kinds of things that happen ancillary to the actual construction work is, is in the incidental costs. So the total referendum comes in at twenty eight, eight, eleven. And I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew to talk about the financing of the project.
Yeah, so starting here with the financing of the project, there's a couple of key items that obviously we want to focus on from the planning of it, and right here minimized debt payments, which means borrow at the correct time and amount, as well as at the best interest rate. As far as timing, we're talking about, we wait until, you know, we have SED approval. Everything has been approved by the state, we have gone to bid and had, you know, working with your construction manager, a pretty good idea of what the needs are gonna be. We start with what's called a, an anticipation note, a short term. Borrowing to kind of finance these items and then once your aid flow is known and, and the state's gonna pay for that high building aid, which we'll get into in a minute, that's when we would go to more permanent structure. So we make sure that we don't borrow too early in the process. The district will use that capital reserve monies kind of early on to, you know, pay for some of those design fees, those early parts of the project and then borrowing more when we're looking at bidding the project and shovels in the ground. As far as interest rates, we competitively bid everything. Most of what obviously every school does, you have to competitively get bids for everything, so your debt is no different. When, when any one of our clients go out to borrowing, it's over a hundred market participants who get all the borrowing documents and have the opportunity to bid on the debt. And then of course maximizing the, the state building aid, so going right into it. Eighty five point seven percent building aid ratio, what this generally means of aided cost, you're gonna receive eighty five point seven cents on the dollar back to the district. So everything in this project, we, we've taken a look at the scope from, from BCA and all those items that you saw a little bit earlier in the presentation are all eligible items for building aid as far as the state goes. Just as a little extra kind of contingency, as you saw, like a construction contingency. When you look at the numbers, we're actually assuming that ninety eight percent of the project is gonna be eligible for state building aid. As you can imagine, just dealing with New York State, they're probably gonna find something small here and there and say, hey, we're not paying for that. It's just a little extra precaution for the district. Maximum cost allowances, these are very important when developing the scope and you saw that incidental budget. For every school building in New York State, there's a maximum cost allowance, which is the maximum amount of work you can do in the building that's going to be eligible for aid within a five-year window. You'll see there, there's two different numbers, construction maximum and incidental maximum. The big piece here is construction, we're talking about anything within the scope of the building, the roofs, walls, anything like that. Incidental is all your site work as well as those soft costs that we just talked about a couple of minutes ago, your, you know, design fees, CM fees, FA fees, those sorts of things. As you'll see, there's fifty seven million and thirteen and a half million of available, so those figures that you saw just, you know, a few minutes ago fit well within those cost allowances, which means that as long as it's, the scope is aid eligible, which we mentioned it is, that within those cost allowances, it'll be fully aided. Capital reserve of three million, this is funds on hand that the district has that is being used towards capital projects. It has to be used towards capital work. Essentially, what the district is doing is kind of prepaying, quote unquote, the local share, which we'll get into in a second, of this project. Excel aid remaining is a, this is just the district's allocation of Excel aid. That's remaining, which is a pool of aid eligible to districts across the state. This will be applied toward the project, so a district can use that as local funds and still receive aid back. Timing, as we mentioned earlier in the project, there is debt falling off for the district in the twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. And what this project does is, timing wise, comes on to recapture that debt. So as the, the, that debt falls off, we're recapturing it to stay at a local tax levy, which is part of Megan's lovely job every year to, to deal with the tax cap equation. So as you'll see, this will help visualize that, that drop a little bit better. Highlighted and bolded is the, the current fiscal year in twenty four, twenty five. There's just three columns here. First one is total debt service for existing projects, so this is stuff that happened in the past that the district is currently paying that annual debt service. Middle column is again the current state building aid that's associated with those projects and the last column all the way to the right, the local share. When I talk about local share, that's exactly what I mean, your debt service minus the corresponding aid for any individual project. So as you see in the twenty four, twenty five year, we're at about two point seven million. But if you look out to that twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year that I mentioned before, we dropped down to that two point three eight million, which is where this debt for this project would start layering in and bring us right back up to that two point seven number. So there's no additional tax increase from the current levels to layer this project. This will show that, so we've added in between each one, the estimated debt for this twenty eight point eight million dollar project and then the estimated corresponding state building aid. Ultimately flowing through all the way to the right, as you see in green, we've been able to now level out that drop in twenty six, twenty seven and keep it at that two point seven million dollar number. This is just, again, a way to visualize this, as you see the, this is debt and aid in the blue and red figures, or lines respectively. But the important piece is the local impact, so you see obviously that the debt will go up with this project, but the corresponding A will go up the exact same amount, keeping that local impact level, which is what we're trying to accomplish. So as we mentioned, twenty eight point eight million dollar project, the state building aid of eighty five point seven. The district is applying the three million dollars of capital reserves to cover the local share as well as the two percent on Excel aid, that piece of allocation that's gonna be applied. And then that expiring debt that we talked about in the, started in twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. Real quick, the bottom fifteen year financing, all state aid, or state reconstruction, school reconstruction projects, the aid is paid over fifteen years. If it's additions, it would be over twenty years. New building is over thirty years, so we always have the debt aligned with that state aid. So you always have, obviously, the revenue to, to offset those, those debt payments. Ultimately, the, the most important piece, no increase to the tax levy.
Thank you. So this graph just sort of shows the, the overall process of talking about a refer, you know, talking about a project, then getting to a vote and then going through design, state review, bidding, contract award, construction, and then moving in and breaking in the project. And you can just see the timeline there and I'm gonna talk about what that, what the dates are for these different sections here on the next slides. Before I get there, I just want to, in the pre-ref stage, there were a number of things that we needed to do to get to this point, to go out to a vote. We had to meet and understand the needs and goals, we did the BCS. We confirmed the, all the pricing through the BCS of, of all the, the things that were found. And then we met to confirm what are the priorities, because the BCS identified other things that could possibly be done, but the district, you know, focused, I think rightly so, on those envelope issues that were the most critical. So that had to be confirmed and defined and then a budget put together for that. And then we had to go through the SEACR process and that was done at the October sixteenth board meeting. And then the referendum amount was set and also finalized at that October sixteenth meeting as well. So that's the pre-ref stage. And then the, the schedule of the project is, you know, we've gone through this, this pre-ref as I, as stated here. We're gonna have the public referendum on December tenth. And then it goes into design. And the design stage is roughly gonna be from January to June of twenty twenty five and then we'll submit to the state. The state review process is usually, it varies, but it's been longer recently. But we're assuming July through December and then a December SED approval. And if we go to the next slide, that would allow us to put the project up to bid in January and February of twenty twenty six. And that's a, that's an ideal time to bid because contractors are lining up their work for the summer. We would award the bids in March and we would look at a spring twenty twenty six construction start. The construction phase, we're showing right now about a one-year process, but that exact phasing and how that construction is gonna work still has to be determined. We'll be working with your construction manager who will be driving this schedule, figuring out all of the logistics of this. While we're doing the actual design documents, they're gonna be working on, how do we set up, you know, crews around the site? What's the most advantageous way to do that? What's the best timing, when do we do what first, you know, how do we do that? So that will all be determined at a later date, but we're assuming no later than fall of twenty twenty seven, the project will be done and, and closed out. And with that, we'll just open it up to questions.
Are there any impact models on potential impact to the student life while the construction's going on?
Are there any, excuse me?
Any models or any kind of impact planning for student life while construction's going on?
Well, one of the things that's critical is that we don't interfere with the day-to-day instruction. So a very important part of that construction management logistics, I would call it, is figuring out when we're gonna do the walls, when we're gonna do the roofing. We love to do all of the work if we could over the summer, but this is more work than we can probably do in one summer. So we're gonna have to figure out how to phase some of this work and we'll have to do that in conjunction with the district, sitting down, going through that and figuring out, how do we do it and not impact the day-to-day activities? Because we don't want to cause disruption. I'm not gonna stand here and say there won't be some headaches with it, you know, because there always is when you do construction. If you've done any remodeling on your house, you know that sometimes there's things you have to deal with. We'll have to do some of that, but we want to plan it to the large extent where we do not impact day-to-day activity. We know that's critical.
Yeah, we'll be looking at mostly summer, but given the grand scale of this project, we're also gonna consider like second shift type of things, so that when the school day is over, maybe we can actually tackle some of the work too.
Right. And a lot of the wall system could be done second shift, which means after school lets out, you know, and they would work with lights and, you know, and obviously we can't do that through, you know, we probably would not be doing that through December, January, February, but through the fall and in the spring, we could be doing that.
And the back wall is pretty available without distractions to, all the back of the building.
Right.
Is not classroom facing.
Right, that helps for sure.
Is it too simplistic to say that because this is mostly exterior and I know there'll be less disruption inside and?
There will be, but all the classrooms have windows, like, you're right there.
Depends on the location. And I also have the luxury of having experienced it because of the pilot project, it was right outside my office, so I know exactly what it entails.
Not quiet.
There are, there are aspects of it that are not quiet. But there are some that can be done during, you know, without interruption and then those other things that you just can't do.
And the capacity we have for parking and traffic and extra people.
Yep.
I mean, we only have one accessory in and out.
We're looking to use the tennis court as a staging area to mitigate that because you're right, parking is a premium here.
And that's all part of the phasing logistics plan that has to be developed. And, and that's, that has to work.
And we'll have to tell contractors, I just can't store stuff here.
Right.
I was also more concerned with, will there be any relocation of students? Do we know if that's gonna impact classrooms? Because, I mean, personally, I came from a world of like FEMA trailers after Katrina, so like, are there gonna be anything like that? Or are those students gonna be relocated to other classrooms? That's what I'm mainly worried about, what I talked about, student impact.
I'll, I'll give you a blind answer to that, since we don't have all the logistics laid out. During the normal school year, we don't have an option that's not gonna happen. During the summer, we may offer our summer school stacked in a wing so that we have another wing available or something like that, but we're still probably using the school building.
That makes sense.
Right, just not necessarily traditionally, we're spread out in all the wings in the summer, we stay on the first floor. It may make more sense for us to stack into one wing based on grade levels so that we have the other ones available for construction all day.
And that plan, whatever that phasing plan ultimately be, you know, is developed, that will be communicated, you know, with everyone. So that's, you know, we're working with the district about how we're gonna do this and, and so every, there shouldn't be any surprises about how things are gonna happen through construction.
Is there gonna be an inspection process per phase to basically ensure that the problems that we're having now will actually be mitigated and run into this problem like, you know, for another fifteen, twenty years down the road?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, yes. The short answer is yes, there will be inspections and testing throughout the whole project to make sure that what is being installed is what was specified and what you should, what you want.
Well, it's, it's not just a question of what we're, but it's.
What was designed?
Whatever, you know, the mistakes that were previously made during the process. Is that inspection process gonna basically go over, you know, go over the process and take a kind of like a fine judgment to ensure that those issues aren't mitigated completely?
Yes, I mean, yeah, so your construction manager will be here every day overseeing this, the construction. Architect is here on a regular basis as well and the engineers to look at things. And then also our outside independent testing agencies that come in and look at these things during construction. So, yeah, we're not gonna repeat those mistakes that were made. The biggest problem really, to be honest with you, is the material that was used on the exterior, you know, to begin with. The, that EFS system is what it's called, is really not something that you typically use on a school. Not in the Northeast anyway. It's usually used on shopping malls and, you know, drugstores and things like that. That a building is planned to be torn down in, you know, ten or fifteen years. You know, it's not a school that you're looking for something to last for fifty, sixty, seventy years, so.
Yeah, and we will have a construction manager who represents the owners. They represent us, as Scott said, they will be on site every day. They will look at every piece of material that comes on site to make sure that it is according to spec, it is what we've ordered, it is exactly the serial number and everything to ensure that we're covered, to make sure that this never happens again.
Okay.
Do we know if there's going to be any vetting of people working for the contractors, so like physically doing the labor? So we wanna make sure we have safe people on the property as well, especially students on the property.
They, they usually go through, they're required in the specifications to go through your vetting system that you have and the background checks and all of that kind of information. That's a requirement to be able to work onsite and there's strict guidelines in the specs about what they can and cannot do onsite. So all of that will be part of the process as well. It's a good question.
And they prefer not to be in the building, like when we did the pilot project and everything, they had, you know, a porta potty out there. a porta potty out there, everything. They did not have to come into the building at all.
Yeah, I don't anticipate you really have any interaction in the building with the contractor, with this project, because it's all outside.
And, and everybody, all the laborers have some sort of mark on them, where their contractor, where they come from, whether it's a hard hat or it's on their badge or something like that.
Typically, we have badges that have to be scanned and they go through, and they're, they're checked through your system, your security system at the start of the project. Yep.
Great questions. Got any more?
No, I'm good. I don't have any more. I came from a background contract.
We're glad you came to ask some good questions. Makes the meeting feel more worthwhile. We appreciate it.
Are there gonna be people from the state here to, to just kind of, like, just going back on my question, just, you know, kind of ensure that, you know, state funding 85% or 87%, are they gonna be, like, looking over the project just to make sure that, you know, their money being spent properly? Or is that, is that just based on, like, reports that, you know, project managers would give them?
Right, typically not. Typically, they don't come because they're just, you know, they just, they're over, you know, they're over, they've got too much work going on typically to come to every construction site. They rely on the construction managers and the architects to ensure that things are being installed. Now, you're being, you're right across the river from the Capitol, so I can't say definitively that somebody might not stop out, but typically, they don't.
Anyone miss out? No?
Anything else?
Thank you, guys. All right?